Board of Education Budget Hearing for September 23, 2014. May have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk. President.
President.
Here.
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 And I would like to introduce Ms. Jen Hermes to take us through the proposed budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson. As I know it seems like a long time, but as many of you might recall, on July 22, the Board of Education did place a tentative budget on display where it's been available for inspection ever since. What I want to do tonight, since we went through the budget in more detail in July, is we're going to just do a refresher on the overall finances and also on some of the initiatives and an update on where we are with those particular initiatives. If you take a look, this is the overall revenues and expenditures for '14, '15. As you can see, the revenues are on the top. You can see our budget is $38,310,177. This year, our expense total, this is all funds, is $38,154,52. So we are projecting revenue over expenditures of approximately $159,000 and some change. The exciting part of this budget is a couple of things. One is I think that our process that we have utilized over the last few years not only includes what are the existing programs that we need to maintain, what are we doing with our fund balances, where are we headed in the future, but also taking a look at some of our facility needs, which, as you know, during the economic downturn, we put on the back burner for a while. And we have both our instructional highlights. This is the exact same slide you saw in July. And as you recall, Lauren and Lori provided information regarding some of these focus areas for this year. Pleased to say that those ones have already been completed, so that is really nice going forward. I know Lauren did work today on the new algebra curriculum, and I'm sure we'll be getting further updates on that. As you can see, math, English Language Arts, the STEM inquiry. Pleased to say that we do have one of our smart labs installed at DPM, and we're looking at the second one for installation during December. So that's a very exciting project. Inspiration Block, I believe that is on the board's agenda to hear an update on that this evening. Response to Intervention, and a look at our special education programs. Some of our facility improvements. I had a wonderful opportunity last week. Everett School students sent me a handwritten, hand-colored, beautiful little invitation to come over and see what they're calling their new school because they're so proud of some of the improvements. So I did go visit, where I found out that Carol White, the Director of Buildings and Grounds, is a rock star. They actually call her a rock star, but they were so excited. We were given student-led tours to show the things on this list. The replacement of the flooring at Everett, some new paint on the walls, new trim, just a refreshed look at Everett School. So if you've not had an opportunity to see that since it has been completed, please take the time. It's definitely worth the trip. Replacement of the main drive at DPM and the main inside drives at Sheridan, which also included some engineering work that was much needed. Replacement of the DPM lockers, all completed. As you know, we do a ton of our projects in the summer before students return. The installation of the 3M security film, I believe, is in progress and should be completed So a really short budget hearing, because we did a lot of the information in July. I do want to say that we do have copies available if anybody's interested. We have both the state form, which is the required form, and also what we call the District 67 Pretty Version, which slices the data in a little bit different way. If anybody would like to have copies of that, just let us know. They are also, or will be, available on our website if anybody wanted to take a look at it that way. There were no fundamental changes from the tentative budget to the final budget presented here to the board as far as net revenues or net expenditures. We did do an accounting change of one expense just between two functions, but the net effect was zero. If there are any questions from the board, I'd be happy to entertain. Otherwise, also at this time, it's appropriate for public to comment on the budget, which will be then adopted or up for adoption in the board's regular agenda this evening.
Jen, the transportation line item. What is the formula based upon the fees that parents pay to offset that cost? Sort of wondering what it would be if those bus fees were different, didn't exist.
Yeah, I don't have the exact amount of those fees. I know originally at the time when bus fees were set, there was a philosophy set, which predates me, that the parent offset would be approximately 50% of the cost of the transportation. That is not the case. It's not anywhere near 50%. Those fees have also remained flat, I believe, for the last several years. So we could easily calculate that percentage and then let you know what that difference is.
Jen, you mentioned that we're doing some capital expenditures that were delayed during the recession, and I'm sure it's in the packet. I just, the capital expenditures plan now, how much are they up this year versus last year?
I think it's up this year from last year about $600,000.
Okay, so it's like 1.4.
If you're just looking at '13, '14 versus '14, '15, it's up from, I think it's about $600,000.
So it's a big percentage.
$700,000 to $1,300,000, $1,400,000. What is that?
Like 50%.
It's six, almost 60%.
Yeah, okay.
Turn in like around $1,000,000, $1,000,000 for the next couple of years.
Okay.
But if you look at one year, in my opinion, it's sort of random or arbitrary. I mean, I don't know that that number tells you a lot that, you know, one year to the next, it's up 60%. I think it's misleading. Another question a lot of people ask is what is sort of a normalized number for our district for capital expenditures? And it's like $1,000,000, $1,000,001. But it's going to get, you know, but it's lumpy, you know, and every 10 years or so, as we discussed, you're going to see a big blip up and then you'll pull back for a while. So I don't think you can look at any one or two years and get a good picture of it.
Right. I think to answer both of those questions, actually Leslie, I do have it in front of me because it's in this version. We have budgeted that we would take in about $335,000 in fees, and our expenditures are just over $1,000,000. On the capital projects, Rick is very close. If you look at the Capital Projects Fund summary in that Pretty Version, as I like to call it, last year was $434,000 spent in capital projects. This year, we're at $1.3 million. So even bigger. And he is correct. I mean, we have some latitude over when those capital projects are conducted, which is exactly what we saw during the economic downturn. We got very lean. We didn't do things that weren't necessarily directly related to safety, where now you're seeing we're able to start working on, coupling with the instructional initiatives, to enhance the programs a little bit more, which is what we have seen at the Cube and things of that nature.
Have we ever gotten back the school safety report?
Tenure life safety?
Yeah, 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 the life safety.
There will be a group of us going down to the architect's office on Friday.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
We've gotten some preliminary numbers, but that will be probably an all-day meeting
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much, and welcome back, everyone.
to go line by line, project by project.
And would that substantially affect this number at all?
It won't change this year's number.
The first item on the agenda is the President's Report.
This year will be spent planning. It will definitely affect our number in our five-year projection and eventually our
When I became president of this board last year, I sent out two areas of focus for the
tenure.
We had a sidebar on capital expenditures. first year: building a mission and vision for the district and proper oversight of the district. As I said in one of my first reports, these are the two most important, these are two Any other questions or comments from board members? of the most important things for a school board to focus on. Questions or comments from members of the public? A vision for a public school system can only come from the community. Any other comments? Hearing none. After all, it's the community's children who are being educated, whose values are Thank you very much, and could I have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing? being taught, and which is, in the community, which is responsible for most of the costs
So moved.
of the district. Second?
Second.
Similarly, oversight is an essential function, is an essential function which can only be Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schuler?
performed by the board.
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
A school district, like any other organization, can't be charged with overseeing itself.
Aye.
Mrs. Clemmenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
In addition, since the board sets tax rates, the board has responsibility to ensure that
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
the funds we spend educating our students are well looked after and that tax rates
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, budget hearing is adjourned.
Now I'd like to call to order City of Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education are set accordingly. As far as the oversight role goes, we should be appreciative of the work of Rick Schuler, Regular Meeting for September 23, 2014. who heads the Finance and Operations Committee, Mike Borkowski, Chair of the Policy Committee, Could I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Clemmenson?
and Robert Lemke, who heads up the First Independent Compensation Committee for our
Here.
Mr. Lemke?
Here.
district.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Fulkerson?
The mission and vision work in our district has been led by Beth Clemmson, who's also done a great job. District 67, along with our cousin, District 115, spent much of last year listening to all of our constituencies: teachers, students, administrators, parents, board members, community members, everyone who has a role in this district or who's impacted by its operations. The resulting work has given those who are charged with running our district tremendous guidance which can be used to build a school system which is in keeping with the priorities, values, resources, and vision which Lake Forest has for its public schools. How will the work done on mission and vision be used? One possibility would be for it to be placed on a shelf somewhere and never looked at again. Another would be for it to be embraced verbally by district leaders but not make it into their, make its way into their strongly held beliefs. In this scenario, some promising work would be started, but it would likely to be soon forgotten as the inevitable crisis or distraction arises. A third scenario would be for the work to be widely adopted, but for its impact to slowly dissipate over time as other priorities and influences become more important. The fourth and only way in which this work will see its true potential will be if those who lead the district truly take it to heart, think of it as a blueprint for the next 10 years, and dedicate themselves to bringing our community's vision to fruition. It's now up to the district, with proper oversight from the board, to put these words into a meaningful plan which works for the benefit of all our constituencies. That concludes the President's Report. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. If people didn't know better, they would think that we had coordinated our comments. So I'd like to dovetail my report with yours. We have the start of school and connecting with some things that I discussed last year. I want to talk about the school rankings and these listings that come out. And there's been another buzz in the community, this time quite different from the last time, which was, the sky was falling last time. This time, we are, according to one ranking, number two in the state and number 12th in the nation, and by another person, to put this in context, we are number 578 in the nation. So you're either number 12 or number 578, one of those two. There's a lot of room in between those two. The issue is, it all depends on what is measured, and the measure this time happened to be by a ranking in which we wind up looking very different than we had in the past, and that thing slides around from time to time and from year to year. So in this case, it's a good buzz. Next time, we'll see what winds up happening. Our enrollment has taken another interesting turn. We have, one of the pleasant trends to see is that Sheridan School, which is our smallest building, is one student down from last year, and only one student down from last year. District-wide, we are 51 students down from last year, and one of the things that happens with that is it's not noticeable. It's not like two classrooms of children move to Connecticut. It's one student in this classroom and one student in that classroom, and so on and so on. So this is, it's not something that is going to have an immediate impact. It may or may not have a cumulative impact depending on what winds up happening in the future. In the district, we have some interest, very interesting things going on. I was in a building visit this week and got to see the dedicated, the purchase from the spirit, the climbing wall at Deer Path West, in action. And in this case, it was in action being used by the teachers who were being trained on the new, the new learning tool. And it was absolutely terrifying for them. And so one of the things that the trainer said was, if this is an activity, it's being used incorrectly because this is a learning tool. And the teachers were shaking and quaking and struggling and cooperating only by necessity because they were so terrified. What is, it's a long four-by-four that's connected with wires with another four-by-four, and you, and there is a series of these, about five of them going up, and you can't get from one four-by-four to the next. So there's a climbing wall, there's some other tools that are associated with it. One of our teachers got to the top of the climbing wall and stopped at the top and said, "I am done," and just let go. And he didn't fall, obviously, but he was just done, and he had reached a place where he just couldn't do it anymore. And two of the other teachers were going up from one four-by-four to the next, and the only way you can get there is through cooperation because you can't reach up and grab it. It's too high, and so you have to work together. One of the things that the instructor said was, when they're up there, and it doesn't look like they're very far up there, they're probably 10 feet off the ground, and they are just shaking and sweating like crazy, and everybody on the bottom is giving them directions, and the trainer said, "Hey, everybody down here has been giving you directions. What's that like? Is that helping or is it noise? Total noise." And he stopped and he sat down, and he said, "This is what it's like for our autistic kids. All that direction that they're getting all the time means nothing to them. It's the one person they're interested in, and our teachers are up on the top, and they are focused on each other like laser beams." They got to the top, they got to sign their name on the top of the four-by-four, and down they came. And one of the other things was, you know, what would you like to have happen at the end of this? Would you like to touch the top? And one of them said, "No, I like a glass of Chardonnay." Another really impressive thing this year, and we'll see a presentation on it shortly, is the Inspiration Block. I've been so impressed with the commitment of the staff over the summer, their passion for the work, and the leadership that they have shown along with their principle. It fits in hand and glove with the aspirations of the mission, the vision, and the milestones. It is highly differentiated, inquiry-based, it's driven by student interests, and also, very importantly, it leverages the community as an asset. Parents are coming home and talking about how their kids are, talking about people that they talk to, whether on Skype or whether in person, from the community and from across the nation. Also, another very interesting experience, I too had a tour of Everett, and I would like to thank our students, Andrew Hayden and Robert, for their tour of the building. They read every note. They were very well prepared, and they were very fun hosts. One of the little guys had a bow tie on and a jacket, and I asked him why he had a bow tie on, because his mother told him to wear a bow tie, and so he did. And he'd also been very well trained, because at the end of it, we knelt down to get a picture in front of the school bell, and the little guy came up behind me, put a hand on my shoulder, smiled appropriately, and out came all the cameras. Anybody that didn't want to have a picture got one anyway because it was a great shot, not of me but of him. I also learned that Mrs. White, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, is an absolute celebrity in the building. Teachers have done a very nice job of letting our students know why they're appreciative and to whom they should look to say thank you. Our mission and vision and milestones, strategic planning and communication, over the summer, we spent a huge amount of time working on that. Had 55 people assembled in this room in June. We reviewed the district data, and that same group assembled again in August, reflected on the data, and looked at potential metrics. How would we measure our success? What would that look like? And also reviewed a variety of strategies. I'm very, very pleased and impressed to see the mission, vision, and milestone reflected all across the districts. If you attended our curriculum nights, the highlight, one of the highlights was the district tagline, "Educating Without Boundaries and Learning Without Limits," in the opening presentations. Parents have also emailed me and said, "My kid sent me this survey and asked me if I had a growth mindset," at the end of taking the survey. Talk everywhere is of growth and of growth mindset and of risk-taking in the kids' classrooms from the kids. So the messages of that mission, vision, milestone work is really getting out. It is an impressive rollout, and I think it's an indication of how the district processed and how it included a wide range of people, and also, very importantly, that we arrived at language that resonates with people, that is meaningful, and they can attach to it. Importantly, this is the beginning of the school year, and we are off to an exceptionally smooth start. Very impressed with a couple new undertakings within each of our elementary buildings, and that is the launch of the Inspiration Block at Cherokee, and also the terrific start that Dr. Sopko has had at Everett, the warm welcome that she has received there. One of the nicest things that happened over the course of the summer that you can't script and you, you can't tell people to do things like this, it's just too thoughtful, is the staff on her first day did not walk in the building. They waited for her outside and clapped her in to her new building, which is a really great gesture. And trying to find somebody that could fill the shoes of Ingrid Wymer and what a class act she was incredibly hard, and Dr. Sopko has done a really, really terrific job already. So with that, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on an item of their choosing? We move on to reports and discussions. The first item is a report on the Inspiration Block from Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm really inspired to come here and to update you on the progress of the Inspiration Block at Cherokee School this evening. In May 2014, the board approved the first year of a two-year pilot of the Inspiration Block for Cherokee Elementary School. And after many hours of work this summer on both the scheduling as well as curriculum writing, we have students in kindergarten, third, and fourth grades attending one of the two Inspiration Blocks on a daily basis. When we did our summer work, we wanted to start with a common vision for each block of time, and the vision is outlined there. I think it's really important to note that each of the starting places really firmly aligns with the vision for District 67 in that the statements for both the Inquiry Block and the Language Acquisition Block begin with allowing for learning without boundaries. Both blocks address standards in science and social studies. The Inquiry Block focuses on real-world problem-solving and inquiry-based learning. The curriculum was written using the project, or yeah, project-based learning framework, or PBL, we call it for short. And the PBL framework begins with a driving question, so an overarching question for a unit, and then through an entry event or something to start the unit, you might think of it as like a field trip or an interview with somebody, then it helps students to dive in deeper through questioning and explore different avenues within that thematic area. The Inquiry Block also plays on the 21st century skills of collaboration, critical thinking, and communication. Kids are working in teams, kids are researching together, they're asking each other questions, and this was what our vision was to start. The Language Acquisition Block, again, allows for learning without boundaries. Again, it addresses science and social studies standards, but through a content-based nature, so students are immersed in the Mandarin language during this block of time. And we are really focused during this block in providing students authentic opportunities to use another language so that if they were placed in an area in China where Mandarin is the native language, they would be able to be functionally proficient, so they would be able to communicate and make their way around. Just a quick overview of the setup. Kindergarten, both blocks are 60 minutes of time. In third grade, they're 90 minutes. On the inquiry side, it's science and social studies again. Part of that block of time in third grade is world language, two days a week, and in fourth grade, three days a week. So in fourth grade, students choose, students who are in the Inquiry Block choose a world language to study from fourth grade through eighth grade, so that is still a part of that time. And then Number Corner is addressed during that period of time. Likewise, in the Language Acquisition Block, it's science and social studies curriculum, Chinese Language Arts, and then Number Corner is also addressed. This is what, it's kind of a sample schedule might look like. So Inquiry Block, it's 90 minutes of time, but part of that time, this would be like fourth grade where they have world language three days a week, and Number Corner on the alternating days, and then the bulk of that time is spent in the inquiry content area. Number, or for Language Acquisition Block, they do a warm-up, which includes Number Corner, some calendar activities at the beginning, and then they move into the science and social studies content and the Chinese Language Arts. I'm going to review just the overarching thematic units that were developed. The curriculum writing is still in process. We did a lot of the writing over the summer and really firmed up the first couple of units, but as we continue throughout the year, we want to be able to be flexible in our planning, so we're, we will accommodate any changes along the way. It's also important to know that grade-level teachers did the planning. We also collaborated with our science specialist at our school, and she collaborated with both blocks in the development of curriculum so that we were sure to address both science standards, the next-generation science standards that were recently adopted, I think, last year, 2013, and then the C3 framework for social studies, which is college, career, and civic life. For kindergarten, the Inquiry Block is beginning with a unit, "Learning About the Habits of Mind," which you'll see that's repeated throughout. And then for the Language Acquisition Block, it's a parallel, talking about some of the things that make us who we are, but more providing a foundation for language learning, so basic reading, social language, "I'm five, I like school," things like that. And then moving into a community unit, people in the community, the community around us. The next unit is more focused on science, so looking at magnets and exploring magnets and force and motion, then moving to a holiday exploration, further on, plants and animals, weather, and then environment and trees. So you can see that some of these units bend more towards science and some bend more towards social studies, and then some naturally integrate the two. So, for example, the Plants and Animals unit would involve the surrounding area, let's go explore the community outside of the school building, let's see what's around us. For third grade, similarly, the units are pretty parallel in their focus, addressing, again, the same standards, but just doing it in a little bit different way for each of them. So the third-grade Inquiry Block started out with the inquiry process, and what is it like to ask a good question, or what makes a good question? Kids were researching what would make a good class pet, and were able to do enough research to convince their teachers to get a class pet. So that was a really exciting time last week for the Inquiry Block. Then they're also going to look at what makes an effective team, and teamwork, and habits of mind. And then while they're doing that, the third-grade Language Acquisition Block is looking at habits of mind and weaving that throughout traditional Chinese literature. So they will actually be using the Chinese literature that they are reading to develop their own stories and dramatizations of the habits of mind, and pick one habit of mind that they're going to display. Then they're going to move into a unit on animals and ecosystems and in the surrounding area of Lake Forest or in China, and look at how animals and just ecosystems in general are affected by the landscape of both of those places. Third-grade Inquiry Block is going to take a look at Thanksgiving myths and misconceptions, while the Language Acquisition Block does a comparison of Native Americans and the ancient Chinese. And then finally, another unit that we will be looking at is Bridges and Force and Motion. And finally, for So, the third-grade Inquiry Block started out with the inquiry process, and what is it like to ask a good question, or what makes a good question? Kids were researching what would make a good class pet, and were able to do enough research to convince their teachers to get a class pet. So, that was a really exciting time last week for the Inquiry Block. Then they're also going to look at what makes an effective team, and teamwork, and habits of mind. And then while they're doing that, the third-grade Language Acquisition Block is looking at habits of mind and weaving that throughout traditional Chinese literature. So, they will actually be using the Chinese literature that they are reading to develop their own stories and dramatizations of the habits of mind, and pick one habit of mind that they're going to display. Then they're going to move into a unit on animals and ecosystems and in the surrounding area of Lake Forest or in China, and look at how animals and just ecosystems in general are affected by the landscape of both of those places. Third-grade Inquiry Block is going to take a look at Thanksgiving myths and misconceptions, while the Language Acquisition Block does a comparison of Native Americans and the ancient Chinese. And then finally, another unit that we will be looking at is Bridges and Force and Motion. And finally, for fourth grade, again, you'll see similar parallels. The Language Acquisition Block is doing a similar unit for habits of mind and Chinese literature, just to start off the year. And then the Inquiry Block in fourth grade has been really fun, looking at teams and how they work, talking about learning without limits and educating without boundaries. Our kids have been Skyping with professional athletes. We've had people come to school. Tomorrow, I believe, Lake Forest is cutting down a tree and talking about how tree cutters work together as a team in front of the school building, so it's a mini-field trip outside of the classroom. And the kids are great because they have developed interview questions, and I was even interviewed, about teamwork, and from there, they're going to look at themes and take that into a presentation on teamwork and effective team-building. Further on, a more social studies-based unit is Five Themes of Geography. So, we'll look in the Inquiry Block at how geography, the five themes affect different regions in the United States. Language Acquisition Block will look at China as our geography base. Sun, Wind, and Water, and alternative forms of energy. Again, surveying different regions in both areas and how natural disasters shape the landscape of both the United States and China. And then in fourth grade for the last unit, it's looking at the E, the engineering in STEM, so playground design and what makes effective playground equipment. And then for the Language Acquisition Block, looking at the Harbin Ice Festival in the northern regions of China and building ice and snow sculptures using the same principles. Both of our new Mandarin teachers are from that region, so they have firsthand experience. When we approved the first year of the Inspiration Block, of the two-year pilot, the first and second grades were to receive a taste of inspiration. So, currently, students in first and second grade, and also kindergarten, still go to science. Kindergartners go one time a week for a half an hour, first graders are two times a week for a half an hour, and second graders are two days a week for 45 minutes. So, they spend, the partial immersion program still exists in first and second grade, so students spend half of their day in the English language for their English Language Arts instruction, and then the other half is math instruction in Mandarin, like it has been in the past. Students in the traditional classrooms have a taste of the inspiration, and I'll show you sort of what that looks like. The teachers, because the kids are still in science, decided to first look at Social Studies units, and they redesigned them using that project-based learning, or PBL, framework. So, instead of having the field trip at the end of the unit, might have an entry event at the beginning of the unit where kids can have a common experience and then explore. Some of the units, first grade looked at, is habits of mind, so we're, again, using that common language throughout the school building. Kevin Henkes, author, study in Pilgrims. And then second grade, the example of the unit that they used is a landmark unit where the students actually become travel agents, do some research through the inquiry process, and then convince their parents to take them on a trip. One of the things that our fourth-grade teachers especially have been using with their classrooms are glows, questions, and grows. So, glows are things that are going well during your research process or your inquiry process. Questions are questions that are still out there that you need to answer, and grows are things that you need to grow in the process. So, some glows for the Inspiration Block, our students are engaged, they're excited about learning. There's a lot of real-life application in both of the blocks. Interdisciplinary, students in both blocks have been saying, "Oh, yeah, this is what we did during whatever block I was in," and they're transferring that to their English Language Arts or to their math, and learning from the larger community. While I explained a lot of what the fourth grade and the third grade has been doing with the Inquiry Block, our students in the Language Acquisition Block on Thursday are going to have a visit from some high school students who are actually in Chinese I and II classes, and they're going to come and have conversations with kids that are in the Language Acquisition Block, and hopefully learn a little bit from our students, and our students will have the experience of teaching them a little bit. Some questions that still remain, how will we know it's working? So, right now, we're discussing, what does evaluation look like? What measures are we going to use to know that we are succeeding? And included in that would be some climate surveys, both in the school and in the larger community, and then also looking at achievement, and are our students really meeting the goals that we've set forth for them? Language proficiency, sorry, that was a question that has come up through the process. How does the setup of the Language Acquisition Block affect language proficiency? So, we are working to answer that. We've set some goals for end-of-year goals, both in, well, in reading, writing, listening, and speaking for the students at the end of kindergarten, third grade, fourth grade. Last year, we did a random sample of the Apple Test for language proficiency, if you recall. We plan to do that for all fourth graders at the end of this year, so that will be another instrument to use to measure how students are progressing along the language proficiency scale. And then, how will students learn science in another language? That's a big question that keeps coming up, and again, through the curriculum writing process, we are using the standards that have been adopted already in GSS and the C-3 standards, and we will be assessing along the way to make sure that the kids are meeting those standards through classroom assessments and projects, performance-based assessments. And then as we grow, we continue to implement professional development for our staff members, again, developing a program evaluation plan. We increase time for collaboration with all of our teachers. They've been so wonderful about giving time, working together, developing new ideas. It's been a really exciting time at Cherokee. And then continuous communication, so that's part of the reason that I'm here tonight. I think I've given this presentation maybe four times now, so some people may be bored, but it's really important to the process that questions are answered and that we continue to communicate updates along the way, so be looking for that as we continue. And we're really inspired, and we hope that you are. I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Kelly, I was glad you addressed the evaluation issue, but could you, or Mike, or both of you, talk a little bit more about how at the end of the year? It's way too early, but at the end of the year, how will the evaluation be made and who will make it? And will we decide to continue with the program after one year, or do we wait for two years to make that decision?
I'll let Lauren handle this one.
Or Lauren.
Kelly and I will be working together to create the program evaluation. We're looking at three components. One is climate, and both in the school and the community. Two is language proficiency for the students in the Language Acquisition Block, and three is reading and math achievement for all students. So, right now, those are the three areas we've identified. It's possible a few more might creep up, but those are pretty much our indicators. So, starting with the end in mind, we'll work backwards in terms of timing. In order to extend, because this was a one-year pilot of a two-year phase-in plan, so we would want to come back to, I would say, no later than April at the latest with the results of the program evaluation. So, it's, the timing isn't always perfect, right? The reading and math achievement might be from winter scores, it won't be from spring, but we can give you progress, I think enough, hopefully, to warrant approval for the second year of the phase-in, and then evaluate at the end of next school year, because then the program will be complete in terms of K through four.
Perfect. That was a good explanation.
Kelly, I wanted to say thank you to you and the staff. You guys really were rock stars. You worked extraordinarily hard over the summer and really took what was a controversial issue in the spring and turned it into something really wonderful. We talked about owning the dinner conversation, and last night, my son came home and owned the dinner conversation, talking about how in his group, the firemen came and they got to interview the firemen, so thank you. Lauren, we talked a little bit at the Ed Committee, but maybe you can share for the bigger group, knowing it's one year of a two-year pilot, but also knowing that if it goes well, we want it to be a district solution. Can you just talk about your noodling in your head about years three, four, five, and beyond?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, no. I think the most exciting thing, and I shared at the Ed Committee, the most exciting thing about the creation of the Inspiration Block, the reason we were so literally over the moon, like buying out Starbucks with their Inspiration mug, just at the thought of not only resolving some of the strife and concern, but also creating something that aligned perfectly with the district mission and vision. And as it's playing out, which we should never take for granted, having a principal who is capable of carrying it out to this level, it is proving to be, even in this short amount of time, exactly what I think a lot of us imagined in those months of planning with the mission and vision. So, looking ahead, if the Board approves the second-year pilot, and next year, we're able to see what the full year looks like, the full school looks like with this Inspiration Block, then we would want to give the other schools the opportunity to be inspired and to create their own Inspiration Blocks. What we also really liked about this plan is that it was structured enough to be replicated, but flexible enough to meet the unique cultures of each school. That was really exciting as well. So, that would be the vision, is that all of our children have an opportunity to spend time each day where their subjects are integrated and woven together in a way that gives them choice and gives them the opportunity to pursue the project-based learning. Project-based learning is a perfect structure for our mission and vision. So, that would be the hope. I will say that teachers from other schools have already taken notice, and we are not saying you need to wait. We're saying, "Hey, do you want the book on PBL? Do you want to think about redesigning one of your units? We're here to support you doing that." So, hopefully, it'll be organic with a little bit of gentle direction from the district.
Other comments from board members? Well, I just, when I think of where we were sitting here six months ago and everything, and where we've ended up, it's just remarkable, and great job by everyone who's been involved with that, so.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next report, the 2015-2016 Proposed Calendar.
Lori and I are partnering on the calendar project. So, we are behind in our approval of a 15-16 calendar. So, we're glad to catch up by bringing you a proposal this evening, but giving the Board time to think and gather input over the next month, and then hopefully approve in October. Soon after that, we'll be coming to you to talk about the following year's calendar. Calendars can always be amended, but it is typical for districts to have the following year's calendar up by, really, almost just a few months into at the most of the current school year. So, we also, in creating this proposed calendar, really took into account the Board's request for us to step back and take a different look at school programming. And I think what really stood out for us a couple of months ago is when you shared concerns about the, what seemed like a lot of disruptions throughout the school year, it dawned on us that as educators, having been in the system for so long, that feels totally normal to us. We're used to half-day here, in-service here, institute here, parent-teacher conferences here. That's the way it's always been. But we really took to heart your request for us to try to look at it differently. So, what we've done is, in this proposed calendar, we've bookended the years with three of our four institute days. We are allowed by law to take up to four full-day teacher institutes. We really want to take advantage of those. They are very valuable time, but we have front-loaded two of them, put one at the end of the year, and then continued to keep our tri-district day on the calendar. We feel that's a really valuable opportunity for the three districts to come together. We also have two half-days throughout the year, so we feel that is minimal compared to years past. This current school year is also two, and that was because, if you recall, we amended the calendar in June per the Board's request. So, we feel like we're in a better place with half-days. We're not exactly where we want to be in the end, but in the meantime, we have a committee working headed by teachers to look at parent-teacher conferences, and really, again, examine a practice that has been in place for a long time and ask ourselves, given technology, given power school, given the amount of time that teachers and parents might meet informally, is this current structure the best that it can be? Does it meet our current needs? We are still having the minimum number required days by law, and I know that was a concern that the Board shared as well. If that is something we want to look to change, that would be something that we would want to plan for in future budgets with our business office.
Just a comment on that. I had spoken to Ben Gray, the LFEA president, after the comments were made regarding, "Why are we going with the minimum?" And his response, and it would be great to have some numbers on this, he felt like, other than perhaps CPS--
Correct.
--all of our counterpart districts participate in the same number of days that we are.
Yeah. And we could easily contact the regional office to get that information, but my experience has been the same. Other questions about the calendar? We also took into account Section 3.2 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, which talks about the work year, the number of days, et cetera.
I have a few questions, but while we're on this topic of 174 days meeting the state minimum, I swear I counted it three times and I came up with 173.
Okay, we will double-check.
Tell me--
We've had several counters already, but we'll check again. It should be 174 student attendance days, two full-day parent-teacher conferences, four institutes. The two half-days count as student attendance days? Did you count those?
No. I counted half-days as half-days.
Ah-ha. There you go. As long as it is--
We're cheating.
No, we're not. We're following the rules.
I learned in math that half is a half, not one, so--
You haven't worked with the state of Illinois yet.
That's the difference. But I agree, the bigger issue is, is it 174 that we want, or do we want 175 or 180? At some point, I would like us to take a look at that, including the Board.
I would say that I really, when I received this, and it was great that the way the reports came this month, very appreciated to be able to go through everything in detail when we were at home. I don't know if all of you felt that way, but this was, I thought, much more effective, so appreciated. Very happy to see the huge blocks of yellow, that consistent, so there aren't so many days lost in the middle of a week. Now, we can't do anything about the weather. I'm hoping we can control that, too, this year. But looking at it right now, if you look at April, and you look at May, and you look at even December, at least it's consecutive days.
Yep.
So, I think that is a vast improvement from where we are coming from.
Good. We're looking for a cleaner calendar, less disruptions--
It does--
--more consistent.
It does look a lot cleaner. I definitely like it better.
Good.
If we're saying that half-days are not as productive, or not even half as productive as a full day, why keep two of them? Why not, if they're not as good, why not make them zero? Now, I know we had two last year, and we still have two this year--
Right.
--so I don't see a big change in that.
Right.
And I know what it entails. It means continued teacher-parent conferences after school.
Actually, we did change that in that the night that our teachers have conferences, they are teaching a full day. The two half-days remaining are for what is known as records time, and I know that's been something--
Oh, right, right, right.
--we've discussed with the Board before. It's a longstanding practice in the district, and that's something that, at this time, so far in our time here, I think I speak for both of us when I say that we feel that that time is very well-used, and it's very important for teachers to have that time during the workday to come together and bring closure at certain points in the school year, prepare for reporting out to parents, grade assessments at the same time to look at inter-rater reliability. So, we feel that time is productive, and that's the two days.
But, for instance, one of them is still a half-day before a three-day weekend. In fact, it's record day, a half-day, and it's before the May 27th--
Right.
--weekend with the Memorial Day weekend.
Right.
I am not convinced that teachers can't do these, you know, the report card or record dates over the weekend, on Monday. It's essentially a four-day weekend towards the end of the year, kind of a critical time. It's a four-day weekend for the kids.
Yeah, I can, I've had conversations with teachers-- Yeah, I can, I've had conversations with teachers, and this is a pretty specific and pretty unusual ask on the part of our staff, particularly our elementary teachers, who are doing a lot of writing at this time and putting things together that the half-day that they have for the records is really a small, a very small portion of the time that they actually spend getting all these things together, so that, yes, they use that half-day, they use all of it, and then they use the evenings and the weekends and so on as well. One of the things that we have to take in mind in regard to our calendars is that, for the overwhelming majority of our teachers, their day does not end at 3:15 when the kids go home. For most of our teachers, it is the case that, in a lot of ways, the most important work they do is in the evening when they plan, because if you plan well, you execute well, and there's a tremendous amount of work that gets done outside the school day. Our school day, historically, as I understand it, and if anybody's been around here longer than I have and knows better than this, but as I understand it, our school day was lengthened a number of years ago. We have a substantially longer school day than we had not very long ago, and that was, there are reasons that drove that. To compare us to CPS on that account, there's quite a difference in the length of our two school days with that as well. So, these half-day records days, these are really asked from our teachers, saying, you know, hey, this is something that's really important to them.
I don't doubt that it's important, but if you, even if you could convince me that a half-day is worth a half-day of teaching kids, we're really at 173 days, not 174. I mean, we joke about it, but we're at 173, not 174.
Correct.
I think we're really at 171 or closer to that because...
Of the two parent conferences?
Of anecdotal evidence, and just a half-day is a little less than a half-day, and I don't think the kids get the momentum. I don't think they take it as seriously, and so I'm...
Where were you taking the other two out?
I know I'm not alone on this. I think we're closer to 171 days of actual kid time, of being taught.
I know we have to move on soon, and maybe it would be good if we had clarification here, and I think we talked about this last time. As far as that last day in May, that's the half-day, the records day, I believe in the past, I may be incorrect, and we can clarify, this was a time principals had already, have already at this time, received recommendations from parents where they want their children placed in classes, based on whether it be a teacher or a co-student situation. That articulation goes on throughout the grade levels, through the elementary buildings. I'm not sure about DPM. That, to me, would be very worthwhile, and they have to be in school to do that, the teachers. So, that's a question that I have. I don't know how you feel about that, but that, feeling that, I say that's absolutely worth it. My other feeling is that these half-days, and I know we brought this up to Renee and Tom, and I know as they're working on redoing and aligning their schedules, my hope is that a better alternative is arrived at for half-days, whether that means one of those half-days, we're just doing math and science. The other half-day, we're going to come along and just do a language social studies project, goes along with our project-based learning, it goes along with a lot of the things we were doing. We could actually look at it as an opportunity to do something different and introduce different things.
Yeah. Leslie, thank you so much for bringing that up. Remember, we can approve a calendar, which I think is a service to the community, in October, and then, based on the schedule that DPM comes, and Tom and Renee will be coming to you twice, both in October and December with updates, if it warrants a change. And as you know, they're looking to build in more collaborative time for teachers within the school day, which K4 has right now on a weekly basis with the early release, and DPM does not. So, that could prompt us to be able to take another look at this, and we took notes. The purpose of tonight was to get this feedback.
So, I wanted to, I share some of Rick's concerns, and I'm glad that we're having the discussion now, and hopefully you have the opportunity as well over the next month to take some of this feedback to heart. I also was pleased that there seemed to be progress. I went through as closely as I could this year and last year, and I think we picked, we eliminated one half-day and eliminated one full-day off, so I thought that was progress. The point on the disruptions, I think the board, certainly myself, when I talk about wanting five-day weeks and disruptions matter, I'm saying that because that's what the administration has taught me. That's not me coming up with that on my own. That's what I've heard you folks say and teachers say. So, that's, it's not our idea. It's trying to strive for what I think you folks have said. So, I've got three questions, and I'm trying to keep them more at a philosophy level with real examples, because I think that's a little bit more appropriate for the board. We talked about professional development philosophically being done primarily in the summer. Obviously, there are the Monday early dismissals and the late start at Deer Path and those things. Why do we feel that the tri-district day, you said it's valuable, and I fully agree that it's valuable, why is it valuable in January versus in June? Mike has said that PD and right after the school year, some of the best PD around. Why philosophically is that better in January than in June? That's my...
That's something for us to think about. I mean, there are benefits to coming together mid-year if some of the changes or, you know, outcomes of the discussion, but especially when you're looking at three different districts and you're talking about, for example, last year's was on formative assessment. Teachers walked away with practical ideas, both from a presenter and from their peers, that they could implement right away, but it's definitely worth considering doing with tri-district day what we did with the other institute days.
Thank you.
There are some people that would say that, you know, from a teaching and learning standpoint, mid-year can be optimal. At the beginning of the year, you know, teachers are thinking about getting the year up and running. So, there's a school thought that says, you know, they're fresh, they're, you can, you know, you can bring everyone together and do this development, but then there's some concern about how much will be implemented when they, when they're just starting the year. Similarly, the flip of that is when you do it at the end of the year, they're going off to summer. So, are they, yes, they can go and reflect on it, but they can't go back into their classroom the next day and implement. When you do something mid-year, particularly if you've been leading up to it with conversations at CI or book studies, you can actually spend a day developing, and then they can go right back into their classroom and apply that. So, I think that, and the community-wide piece that we've done, working with Lake Bluff and the high school, I think that has been, particularly last year, was very well-received. So, we thought to totally, to only bookend this full-day PD with full staffs beginning and under the year, we might be missing a key learning opportunity for the staff, and that was our rationale.
Thank you. My second question was, you mentioned the parent-teacher conference committee, which sounds fantastic, and that we need to vote on this in October, and that we can make changes later, but we never really do. Will we have the results of that committee work prior to October?
No. But we do make changes. We, you amended the calendar in June for this current school year. So, I mean, that was a late change, but it's not possible to do a thorough review of the process by October, but we promised to bring an amended calendar if the discussions weren't won.
And my last question is, when did spring break go from five school days to six school days off? According to my calendar, it started, I guess, this past, this current calendar year, but as far as I can tell, prior to this year, spring break's been a week, and now we've extended it to the following Monday, which causes the first week back a four-day week, which you guys have taught me is not a good week.
Yep. I can address this one. This is, there are a couple, there are a couple days in the calendar that are influenced by families and religious observants. One of those, obviously, is the winter break. You know, we schedule around major holidays there. When I meet with the ministerium on an annual basis, one of the questions that they bring up is, look, in terms of religious observation and working with our, the observant families in our community, there are two days that they're very interested in. One of those is Good Friday, and the other one is what they call Easter Monday, that a great deal of families are traveling, and those are things that I hear on a regular basis from them. And so, as a nod to our traveling families, that oftentimes is accompanied with religious observance, that Monday is an important day for them. That's, that was a change that I suggested in an original, the original draft did not have that in there, and reflecting the conversation they had with the local ministers, we added that in.
I think it might be interesting to go back 10 years and find out the average number of snow days we take every year, and add those to the calendar going forward, because that gives you a, pretty much, a set date. You don't have to worry about these five floating days as much, and you get a couple extra days to help make up for some of the half-days.
Right now, our contract limits us to the number of days that teachers can work.
Fair enough. But I'm just saying, it'd be interesting to take a look at...
Yep.
...how many days a year, on average, we lose on top of what we've already got, and is there a way to be flexible enough in future years to, because it helps the parents, it says this is your end date, as opposed to, well, we might have two extra days here, and so, be helpful.
I think that's the purpose for those lines there, the words, like, some, I mean, it's kind of to let parents know right off the bat, that we do anticipate, and typically, I would say I'm never used to, you know, being working two to five, but it's rare that you don't have a couple of full snow days, so more than likely, we'll, very likely, we'll end up linked to that week of the sixth. But again, that's a good way to manage...
Well, that's a good one. Some years.
But starting the week of the sixth would be, you're kind of rolling the dice a bit, because more than likely, we'll still be in school at that time.
I just want to say, I think you guys did a fantastic job taking all of our various feedback and rolling it into a calendar for next year. What I'd like to suggest, because I think there are some, still some lingering concerns, is that perhaps we set up some board workshop time. I feel like we have taken a lot of board time to continually talk about snow days in the calendar, and perhaps it would be better served in a workshop environment so we could, you know, have some meaningful discussion about conference time and some of those things.
So, to violate what Beth just said, I want to ask one last question. What is the school day for the first day of school and the last day of school? Is it going to be this one hour in the release, or is it a full day now?
Right. So, by law, the first and last day have to be full days. So, the plan...
That's enough.
Okay. Well, but I have to say that in the past, including last year in District 67, I believe the last day was not a full day, and that's because the school banks enough time, because our school day is longer than required, to make that early release. That's a decision on the district's part, that's not. So, the law is first and last days are full, but if you bank, so you have to plan with that, but if the district banks enough time, you can then make that last day shorter. So, that's something we can talk about in the workshop as well.
So, this'll be my last question to piggyback on Beth. Did we commit to a, did we commit to a workshop prior to the October vote? I've heard a suggestion.
Oh, I wasn't necessarily saying prior to the October vote, because I thought what we were approving was this calendar, but it sounds like we have some bigger issues in terms of number of days, how we use conference time, planning days, professional development, and I think it might be helpful to kind of talk about all those things together as we, you know, work with our teachers on those things.
Okay. I'm going to propose we move along. Is that in the interest of this meeting, not going for half a day?
But it would count as a full day, though.
Sorry.
Which means we can skip the, we can skip the next meeting.
We did take attendance.
I...
We did take attendance, Lauren.
I very much appreciate your listening to concerns of board members and being so responsive.
Sure.
And thanks also to board members for all their questions and comments. The next item on the agenda, the next report is on the fund balance policy. Ms. Albus?
Maybe I can just jump into committee minutes from the finance operations meeting.
Let me clarify, is there an official report on the fund balance, or...
No, I was going to get to that in my...
Oh, okay.
...committee update.
Okay.
We've decided, to get to the punchline, we've decided to delay it one month, and I'll get to the reason for that.
Perfect. Why don't, then, your report is coming up, so just wait one second.
Yes.
Otherwise, I'm going to get lost. That concludes reports and discussions. We now move to board committees. The first is the education committee, Leslie Fisher.
Okay, thank you very much. Our education committee meeting took place on Tuesday, September 16th, right here, West Campus Seminar A, and 8:15 a.m. It was exceptionally exciting, and I want to thank Kelly, who is no longer here, at least in this room right now. I want to thank, I want to thank Kelly for being there and for presenting. I loved, first of all, how, I'm not going to go over what she presented here tonight, because we definitely get the gist of it, and was thrilled with her presentation, not only at the education committee meeting, but also here this evening. I love how they, in the verbiage, it's now two inspiration blocks, one that is the inquiry block and one that is the language acquisition block. If you'll note, that's different from what it stood at last year, and I think that's great. Also, I thought it was interesting to note, she did not mention this this evening, but for the incoming kindergarten class at Cherokee, those who had the first opportunity to opt into one of, choose either the inquiry-based or the language acquisition, 21 chose inquiry, 22 chose language. So, if we can deliver that every year, that would be great. And finally, 26 students from the first Cherokee Mandarin subset will be moving to DPM in the fall of 2015 for Advanced Mandarin Program that is currently in the planning process. We also heard at the meeting from Judy Epke, she shared an update on the DPM Smart Labs. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to stop by DPM West and see the Smart Lab that is installed in Mr. Polino's classroom, I would really encourage you to do so. I know about half of us made it to Northwood Junior High. It is the same Smart Lab from Creative Learning Systems, and it's the same one. Chairs and paint are to come. Chairs that will be mobile, they are coming, and I know we don't want those stationary, they're already there. They're there. So, the chairs are there, is the paint on the wall? Paint's going to come. So, they're deciding on maybe a very more, you know, exciting color. Okay, so that's good to know. And the prep for the second lab to be housed at DPM East is underway, and teachers in Smart Lab leadership roles will undergo a four-day training at DPM East and will work with the entire staff and those actually more closely related to the Smart Lab to implement the lab on the east side. And as Tom and Renee revamp and further align the building schedules, maximization and utilization exposure to and of these Smart Labs is being considered, as it should be, so all can have access. The maker movement was a subset of Judy's presentation that I know Mrs. Clemmison was sad to miss, but she did cite the website, and you'll see this in my notes, I encourage you to go there, it's http bit dot do slash maker, and the article is "How the Maker Movement is Transforming Education." It's really exciting, and it's a worthwhile read, and that helped us better understand the ever-changing educational tools that engage today's students. Recap of that, we talked about fabrication devices, including a 3D printer, you'll remember seeing that at Northwood Junior High, physical computing such as robotics, Maki Maki, Google Glasses, and also programming. We participated in that last year, as did many other individuals and schools with the Hour of Code. We also discussed how to incorporate Smart Lab time and instruction beyond the encore classes. This is something we've been discussing for about the past year, and it is a sticking point, very, very important to discuss that. For instance, most of our abandoned orchestra corps students miss out. They have a very limited time to have exposure to things such as the Smart Lab. Talked about integrating this into science classes, the usage of these Smart Labs, before and after-school availability, and clubs, brainstormers offerings was another suggestion. So, a lot of ideas coming that can really expose our kids to these Smart Labs. And then, we had a presentation on the Common Core State Standards, and also the preview of League of Women Voters presentation. Did you give that presentation this weekend? Because I saw the date, and I thought you were out of town.
Yep, and Mrs. Fagel and Dr. Rubenstein presented that, and two rave reviews.
Wonderful. I'll talk a little bit about that, I just, yeah, great. So, the Common Core State Standards, and most of you may be sick of hearing about this, but it's something that we're going to continue hearing about. It is a set of standards using a common language. It incorporates quality teaching practices and grades build upon each other. We can plug into it what we want. This seems to be polarizing nationally, but here, the transition emphasizes what we are working towards and provides a clear framework of teaching, of learning standards, both vertically and horizontally. There will be an attached sample of a single English Language Arts Common Course State Standard, as represented throughout grades K through 12, measuring grades K... 12, measuring grades K to 4, 6. It'll be attached in the minutes, that you can take a look at that. And it shows the vertical alignment of the Common Core. And I, I truly don't think it's anything that you would disagree with, or that you wouldn't want your children exposed to. All right. Also, I discussed how Mr. Simic and Lauren and Kevin Rubenstein presented to, on the Common Core State Standards, to the League of Women Voters on September 20th. Okay, a couple last points. Testing this year, just to be clear, NWEAs, if you have kids at the elementary levels, they've already taken them. Some are already completed with their fall NWEA slash MAP testing. So fall, we have a baseline. In spring, we are going to give them again as an opportunity to show their growth. The PARC test will be administered in grades three through eight in March and May. This is the state assessment that is replacing our ISAT. Pros of this, challenging tasks, that it replaces the ISAT, that it is aligned with Common Core State Standards, and that we will not be teaching to the test. And it utilizes computer skills. The cons, of course, is the validity is unknown. This is new. And that the testing process seems more lengthy than what we are used to. Update on summer 2014 curriculum work. Learning targets, meaning the essential questions, assessments, and learning plans, the strategies and resources, are where this curriculum work was focused. Accurate current updated each summer, alignment to Common Core State Standards and vertical alignment. Parent, student, community access to curriculum in the fall of 2015. So we've been hearing about this Atlas Curriculum Mapping Program that is really an online, in real time, where changes are made. Lauren talked about the plan being for every summer, a big bulk of the summer work will be updating that by subject, by subject, by grade level, and by fall of 2015, to have it open to students, parents, and community members, to see what is to be accomplished each year. Also worked on, we heard about this a little bit beforehand, ADD plus ADDVantage Math Recovery, to measure the narrow skills and protocol. The protocol's already in place for interventions for children struggling with math achievement. Additional discussion was that Lori Wilcox discussed SB seven, which we're going to continue to hear a lot about. This is going into effect the 2016, 2017 school year. This basically means that assessments need to be incorporated into teacher evaluation. So we're going to have to plug that into our teacher evaluations. And there was not public participation. And our next meeting is Tuesday, November 18th, 8:15, West Campus. Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to add?
I have a question. You said that elementary classes took the NWEA. Is that one through four, or is that all the way through?
I know that my children have already taken at DPM. I don't know about ele-
And they take it all the way through the eighth grade? Okay, that's what I thought. I'm not sure what elementary means anymore. What classes are ele-
K through eight.
K through eight. Okay.
Thank you, Leslie. The next item on the agenda is Finance and Operations Committee, Rick Schuler.
Okay. Tying back to our new policy, which you'll recall we adopted last spring, with regards to the funds balance report. You'll recall, we're looking for our fund balance to be in the 10 to 15 percent range. Long story short, Alan, at our last meeting, introduced us to our architect, who's working on the life safety requirements and the associated costs. And a long story short, they're not ready. He's not done. He's got a list of items. He hasn't gotten it down to final costs. And as importantly, the finance committee is asking, of those required expenses, which ones overlap with expenses already in our five-year budget? Meaning, they're already in the capital expenditure line item. For instance, roofs have to be replaced or repaired. That can be a life safety issue in addition to, it's just our ongoing maintenance. So at this time, we're not sure how much to add in for cost for the life safety requirements being recommended by our architect. He thinks another two or three weeks will be required to get the detail, the costs, the timing, and in addition, the amounts that overlap with what's already in our budget. Once that's done, and that's been committed to prior to our next board meeting, we'll be able to update the five-year budget. It'll have a lot more meaning to it. And then we can really look at our fund balance and feel like that's a much better projection, that's incorporating everything without redundancy. The expectation is still that once these incremental expenses only are accounted, our fund balance surplus will likely erode over the next five years. Now, I use the word erode, I don't mean to get your antenna up too much. We also believe that we'll keep it in the 10 to 15 percent range. But without these expenses factored in, our balance goes to 19, 20, I think all the way up to 24 percent. So this is an important number. And to give you the report now would be sort of meaningless. But I do assure you that if we do think, we will do things right, and we will keep the fund balance above 10 percent, despite these added expenses. Or, at least on my watch, we're not going below 10 percent. You can write that down. Also, in relooking at our five-year budget, Alan reported that Jennifer and Brittany were spot-on with regard to budgeting for several open positions recently filled, teacher positions, that is. Jennifer reported that there are no changes to the total revenues and expenses from the tentative budget presented in July, which we just approved. Jennifer and Brittany, if your forecasting abilities are that good, do they translate to football predictions? Because I could use them this weekend.
I want to talk to you-
You did. I want to talk to you tomorrow. Okay. Also, Elizabeth Hennessy was nice enough to come back to another one of our meetings. She's with William Blair, and she presented a market update for the debt refinancing. She explained that the parameters resolution, which authorizes the board president and Alan to move forward with the debt refinancing under specific parameters. The resolution will be presented to the board for approval later in this meeting. I think those are the highlights. We'll have a lot more to add in a month after we get the architect's report and the updated budget. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Schuler. Policy Committee, Mike Borkowski.
Board Policy Committee met on September 8th. We first held a joint meeting with 115 to discuss a batch of press policy updates. These are the items recommended by the ISB or required by statute. The admin team presented background on each of the items. The group discussed each appropriately, and consensus was gained. These will be brought before the board later this evening for a vote. The joint meeting adjourned, and we continued with the District 67 Policy Committee meeting. We first discussed Policy 5:30 regarding HR and personnel hiring procedures and processes. We had a good discussion regarding breadth of hiring searches, development of partnerships, and what should be considered policy versus administrative practice. We discussed that a more robust plan would be delivered to the board in December. So at that point, we'll start to understand what should be policy and what should be admin practice. We then discussed Policy 5330, which covers educational support staff. Jen will be bringing suggested modifications to a future policy committee meeting, and also discussing with Jeff to ensure all the concerns are appropriately addressed. Lastly, Eileen reported that a central repository for all admin practices now exists in the form of a Google Docs drive. The objective here is for all administrative practices to reside in one place for ease of access and continuity. There are currently two documents in the repository, and everyone is encouraged to send Eileen any other administrative practices you have. That concludes the policy committee report.
Any questions from board members? Thank you very much, Mr. Borkowski. Next item on the agenda is the Compensation Committee, Mr. Lemke.
The Compensation Committee has not met.
Thank you very much. We now move to liaison reports. These are organizations to which board members serve as liaisons. The first is the North Suburbans Special Education District, Mike Borkowski.
The NSSCD Governing Board met last on August 27th. One item of interest to our board is that the NSSCD Finance Committee reported that they are now beginning to examine various financial models, including looking more at the pay-as-you-go approach that we desire. Related to this, the District 67 Administrative Team is working with the NSSCD staff to define our desired state regarding this and our overall relationship with NSSCD. This work's being done in conjunction with Districts 115 and 65. The next NSSCD Governing Board meeting will be on October 8th. That concludes the NSSCD Board Report.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Illinois Association of School Boards, Ed Redd, Bill Anderson. There is no report this month. The next item on the agenda is Curriculum Coordinating Committee, Leslie Fisher.
I was really looking forward to that report from Ed Redd, but I'm sorry, you don't have one this month.
Actually, I have a question.
Curriculum Coordinating Committee, I'm assuming, is going to meet in October? October 23rd at 4:00 p.m.? Oh. So continue to bring applications in, in order, you're continuing to accept applications for Curriculum Coordinating Committee. Okay. Send them to Lauren. Okay, through this Friday. Look forward to being there. Spirit of 67 Foundation met September 9th at 9:15 a.m. And Mike, as he often does when he visits parent groups such as the Spirit and the APT, he reiterated the key focuses of the year, growth, support, and yet, meaning we're not quite there yet, we're still working towards it. And these were echoed throughout both meetings. And I also specifically, being at open house on the DPM West side, heard that over and over again in every classroom that I went to, which I thought was remarkable. I actually, I think, called Mike or emailed him right as I left, saying every single classroom I was in, and I have two kids on different teams, said, growth, support, and yet. We're going to, we're going to work. You're going to get frustrated, and we're going to work through it. The support component, I think, is important, too, as there is so much support in place at our schools. And if your teachers did not get that information out, the teachers that I heard did get that information out, whether it's they want your students to email them to meet them before school, stay after school. At Dear Path, on both sides of the building, there are homework after-school clubs four days a week, led by teachers who are right there. There is a writing resource center, two to three days a week, and there is a math resource center, two to three days a week. Some of these resource centers are partnered with the high school kids who come over and help the middle school kids. So support is, is key. As we are supporting our teachers and all they are learning, we are supporting our students. So Mike also talked about working on the strategic plan this summer, and talking about, as Kelly brought up today, that a Gallup poll or a similar tool measuring well-being may well be in store as a form of assessment in our near future. And he also identified the important work done in the summer, the progress on the STEM labs, alignment of the DPM schedules, and the Everett Building improvements. The next community book talk, I believe, will be Mindset, with author Carol Dweck scheduled to speak. Do we have a date when she is supposed to speak?
We don't. We are waiting for, to hear back. We have a commitment that, that Dr. Dweck will come. And we would not have that, by the way, if we weren't partnering with LEED.
Great to know.
That's a really important thing to point out. It's, it's one of the really good things. So we're waiting. We've sent dates. And I really thank Andy Duran for all his hard work on that. And we're waiting to hear back on those two best dates for us.
Wonderful. And if you haven't, I was fortunate to be part of the strategic plan and received a copy of Mindset, as did many of the people who were on that committee. If you have not read that book, I highly recommend it. The Fall Luncheon benefiting the Spirit, as you know, the Spirit has two events each year. In addition to the membership fees that bring in monies for the Spirit, there's the Fall Luncheon, and then, of course, there's the Home Tour, which is in May. The Fall Luncheon is scheduled for Friday, October 17th, at Exmoor, 10:30 to 2:00 p.m. Great auction items. It's going to be a wonderful morning and afternoon, as it always is. And the Spirit Board will meet again on Tuesday, October 14th, at 9:15. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Are there questions or comments from board members? Then we move on to the next item on the agenda, APT, Leslie.
Okay. So the APT Executive Board met on Wednesday, September 10th, at 9:00 a.m. here at West Campus. Allison CK, the president, was absent. However, Vice President Tiffany Wiesner announced that this year's theme, determined by Allison, will be resilience. As you may recall from last year, Allison's theme was balance. This year's is resilience, very much in line with the mission, vision, goal process, as she was a big part of that. Mike, of course, discussed the things I've already said. And a couple of notes. Time Zone is currently on hiatus. And I know that this has struck some people in the district unfavorably. However, although classroom teachers have access, they do have access to supplies and lessons in the interim if they want to incorporate them. And alignment with curriculum will be a focus as Time Zone reintroduction is considered. I think what people, we were getting more pushback, I could tell at the meeting, was more of, this is one opportunity, I'm not going to be able to be in the classroom. But as we are aligning our district's curriculum throughout the grades, this seems like a natural revisitation. The online directory is up and running for all APT members. I highly recommend it. It is an app on my phone at this point. If you haven't done it, do it. Kindergartners had a great welcome with yard signs, t-shirts, and playdates. Community Service Day is for eighth graders, is scheduled for October 24th. Some places they will be serving are Bernays, Dickinson Hall, and others. And the next meeting will be Wednesday, October 8th, at 9:00 a.m. at West Campus. I had announced last month that some of their meetings would be held at Croya. They will not be held at Croya. They will be held here. And since we're all going at some point, you want to be here. So Mike will be attending on behalf of the Board of Ed as a rotating guest. And I did send out a communication that outlined some of the forms that we're going to follow, which entail really focusing on some of your committee roles. So I've gotten a few questions and comments on that. I appreciate those. And if you have any going forward, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Have you sent out dates to board members when they're supposed to attend?
Yes, I have.
Excellent. Okay. I'll check my email for that.
And Bill, you will not be going. You know this, correct?
I'm not going?
No, you're not.
He can go in.
Unless you wanted to fight Rob for it.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Leslie. We now move to action items. The first is the adoption of the 2014, 2015 budget. We had a discussion earlier. Would Jen or Alan like to add anything to previous discussion?
No, as Jen said, no, no changes are recommended. We feel good about the budget. It's balanced in numerous ways, as far as the projects we're doing and structural initiatives, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt a 2014, 2015 District 67 budget?
So moved.
Second. I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, relates to refinancing some of the district's debt, or giving the, the board president and chief financial officer the option to do that under certain circumstances. Alan, would you like to discuss this at all before we vote on it?
Briefly. For many years, debt management advice has been provided to the district by Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. And on a regular basis, William Blair monitors the markets and advises us when there are opportunities to be taken. An opportunity to refinance our '04 and '05 general obligation debt certificates has presented itself. And I'd like to point out that we're not extending the length of the repayment. The issuance is for the purpose of reducing our scheduled interest expenses. Liz is here to provide an overview of the debt certificate resolution and recap of Moody's rating call that we participated in last week. So Liz, I'm going to ask you to step to the podium.
Good evening. Just a brief outline of the debt certificate resolution. It authorizes up to 6.6 million of debt certificates to refi- It authorizes up to 6.6 million of debt certificates to refund the Series 2004 and 2005 outstanding debt certificates. As Alan mentioned, it does not extend the life or shorten it. It's exactly in proportion to the current repayment schedule. The current expected savings are about $564,000, so those are operational savings, because, as you know, the debt certificates are paid from the O&amp;M Fund. And the resolution is the only formal action the board would have to take to move forward with the sale. It authorizes the refunding as long as the savings have a minimum savings of 3% present value as a percent of the bonds refunded. So that's the minimum savings target. Right now, we're at about 8.4% on that ratio, so we're, we're well above it. And as mentioned, the board president and deputy superintendent are authorized to finalize the sale. In terms of the process, we met with, over the telephone, with Moody's Investor Service last week, and today we were pleased to receive confirmation of the AAA bond rating. So we will be mailing the official statement tomorrow and marketing the bonds next week.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from board members?
I guess this is as close to free money as you can get, because, as Elizabeth pointed out, we're not taking on any more risk by going longer term. We're not going to a floating rate versus fixed rate. It's just we're taking advantage of lower interest rates as soon as we can and as much as we can. And rates are down, so we save $558,000 or $564,000 over a couple of years. That's good money. Also, Bill wanted me to point out that Jennifer and Alan will be calling when this, when it comes time to setting this up. We'll be getting competitive quotes. Is that fair?
Do you want to, do you want to give an overview of the reporting process and when we go to market and how we?
Sure. We're pursuing, I think you're talking about the marketing of the bonds, a negotiated sale?
Yes.
Where we're going to be marketing the bonds to bank-qualified investors, because we're issuing less than 10 million. Banks get an extra tax deduction to buy this. So we will be talking to all the local Lake Forest banks, as well as bank purchasers here, here in Illinois, and going through a public sale, a competitive process, which I liken to eBay for bonds, where on a maturity-by-maturity basis, investors will compete. Those who provide the lowest interest rate will be rewarded with that order. So it's an order period, again, kind of like eBay, and so that's the competitive nature of the interest rate negotiation.
Liz, historically, though, we've also then afterwards done a recap of where we issued the bonds in comparison with other similar deals that were done. So would you, would you talk to that?
Sure. Thanks, Alan. We will be providing the district, which, and the board, with a comparable pricing analysis, which is going to look at other AAA-rated issuers in the market at the same time before, during, and after the sale, with your final savings results as well. So you'll have that report. Sorry, I wasn't sure where you were going.
That's answering Bill's question, too. That's good.
Okay.
Other questions from board members? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
May I have a motion on this matter?
So moved, and I should read this verbatim. Parameters Resolution. I move that Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $6,600,000 of general obligation limited tax refunding debt certificates. Series 2014 of Lake Forest School District Number 67, Lake County, Illinois, evidencing the rights to payment under installment purchase agreements for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding debt certificates of said school district, and providing for the security for and means of payment under the agreement of these certificates. Can we have a second?
Yeah, may I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, approval of the Michigan State contract for Mandarin teachers.
Yeah, this is an item that we could have actually had in the consent agenda along with the, the following one, the Charmed Foundation. This is a requirement in order to contract with one of our Mandarin teachers that we have an agreement through Michigan State University. Actually winds up costing us less than, than a teacher because of the, the agreement that, that we have with them. So this, the teacher is in place, and this is just part of the mechanism for making that all happen.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the MSU contract for Mandarin teacher?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, approval of the Lynn Moore Coaching Services Contract. Mr. Semick?
Yes, this is actually part of the emotional wellness through the Charmed Foundation. This is another item, I believe, we could have just had in the consent agenda. This is an ongoing partnership that we have with Charmed, and it's particularly important this year because we have some new people working in emotional wellness as a coaching function.
Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the Lynn Moore Coaching Services Contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is approval of press issue 85 and issue 86 policy updates. Mr. Borkowski?
These are what we discussed earlier. These are all recommended by the ISB and/or required by the statute. There's two batches, Number 85 and Number 86. They cover things such as insurance management, environmental issues, home and hospital instruction, student support services, student teachers, and others. I recommend that we pass these.
May I have a motion to approve press issue 85 and 86 policy updates?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, approval of release of executive session minutes from December 17th, 2013, through June 24th, 2014. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Board members have any questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of the Accurate Biometric Fingerprinting Contract. That's a good name for a company. Are there questions? He wouldn't want the inaccurate one. Are there, Mr. Semick?
Yeah, we tried the scattershot biometric fingerprinting, but we weren't able to find them. You're right. This is a change of a contractor for fingerprinting to try to, to speed our fingerprinting process along, get it done more quickly. I recommend its approval.
May I have a motion to approve the?
What's the current cost, just out of curiosity?
$10? $10. First, we have walk-in and walk locations. We brought in some challenges. We have to wait until 10:00 to let people fingerprint. We have a veteran location and expect to be fingerprinted. So we feel like the, just the, it will allow us much better.
Plus, these guys are accurate.
Also, we have machine tools. We have a certain number, and we're ready. They did last night at my school, the computer. They fingerprinted 24 people last night, and we have results.
Cool.
It, it does say in the contract that they may increase the price per fingerprint by the amount of the increase of the CPI for the previous 12 months, or 5%. Does that mean they'll always go 5%? So we're looking at a 5% increase every year for three years?
Yes. Or is that a maximum?
It says they may, it doesn't say they will.
It's not a maximum?
Why, why wouldn't you? Well, because you might lose a bid. But it's, you're in for three years. It's a three-year agreement. So it's gonna, it's gonna go up 15% in three years. It's gonna be $65, $66 per person.
So looking at the internet's other way to go, to as much as possible, do all around. But I think the internet edging and surveys, and there could be a large number of the districts that are, are changing the reason, certainly the most integrated. We are getting, receiving us the longest time to get results. So this, this seemed to be, it was a little bit more expensive with that. Allow lots of access, walk-in, get results for us. It seemed to be, it was, we could make something happen. If we found a better option, if it was expensive, if we still had the same benefits, we could do it.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. May I have a motion? Would board members like to discuss this anymore?
I move, we pass this contract.
Do they do like retina scanning? Because that's cooler. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the Accurate Biometric Fingerprinting Contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
No.
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
I'm just gonna vote with Jeff.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is approval of human resource items. These are included in the packet, include hiring, resignations, terminations, family and medical leave absence, and change in status. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Clemenson?
Aye.
Mr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Items A through I, they include approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, approval of recognition of schools' application, adoption of First Midwest Bank Resolution, minutes of a regular meeting from July 22nd, minutes of a board workshop July 22nd, minutes of a joint board workshop from September 10th, amended minutes of an executive session, amended minutes of a special session, and disposal of audio recordings. Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed for further consideration? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
No.
Mrs. Clemenson?